Welcome to Spotlight on Schools. We focus on the Rochester City School District. I'm your host, Jim Strauss. This week, we're happy to have back Willa Powell, a member of the Rochester City School District. Thanks for coming back.
My pleasure.
Last week, we talked about the role of the Board of Education, the members on the Board, and we talked about the interaction between the superintendent and the Board of Education. This week, I'd like to start out talking about what perhaps may be a difference in the thrust of the Board of Education as it becomes more active. First of all, for the past seven years, Malik Evans was president of the Board, and he's been characterized by many as a facilitator, as one who seeks consensus. Would that sound, perhaps, fair to say?
Well, it would be more accurate, perhaps, to say that he has attempted to facilitate the superintendent's agenda.
Oh.
To bring the Board to consensus with the superintendent.
Okay. Would it also be fair to say that there have been some strong personalities on the Board?
Oh, sure. That would be very fair to say.
Okay.
I should say that, you know, every Board member that gets elected comes to the Board, essentially, with a reform agenda. I mean, it sells. It gets you elected to have a reform agenda. The question is whether that reform agenda is simpatico with everybody else's reform agenda. And, you know, the result is that you have coalitions that form around ideas and around personalities, and the question is whether you can get four or more votes behind a single reform agenda.
Seven members of the Board, four wins.
Right.
Okay. Well, I think that the perception of the Board's about to change. There's a new president. The new president is Van Winkle. More than a year ago, he released a document he called, quote, "Moving Beyond Reform: It's Time for a Revolution." He has a number of ideas that we'll discuss later. Do you foresee the city school Board will become more activist?
I hope so. I hope so. There's a lot of interest in bringing about changes at the district level. My hope is that some of those things happen, but also that we become activists at the state policy level, that we start talking to the governor about how much money he is or isn't putting into education, that we talk to our Board of Regents about what's appropriate for urban education.
Okay. Well, let's move to some of the issues that the individual Board members have championed, and let's start with you. It's on record that you're deeply concerned with the issues that young women in the district face. Can you talk a little about that?
Sure, sure. Well, we talked a bit about, in our previous segment, about the impact of poverty on education and what happens outside the schools can't always be rectified inside the schools. We also have a cultural bias against teen moms. We want to, as a culture, we want to punish teenagers for getting pregnant. And we do this in subtle and not-so-subtle ways. Some of the ways we punish them is simply to deny them the support and help they need. Now, you've got to get out of the house and get a job and run your own household, and you've got to do all that on your own. But as soon as a young mom gets a job, she's not able to be as good a parent. So the question is, do we want her to be a good parent first and then be able to provide for her kids economically? Or are we going to try to make them grow up all at once? The other thing is, aside from whether we're punishing the teen mom, often for behaviors that she's a victim of, like, very often, a teen mom is the victim of predatory adult males or emotional difficulties that they haven't been able to overcome that make them so needy that they feel like they have to get pregnant and have a baby who will love them unconditionally. Aside from those issues around the teen mom, when we punish the mom, we're also punishing an innocent. That child did not ask to be born to a teen mom, did not ask to be born into poverty. And so if we, in the school district, want to break the cycle of poverty, we have to set that family unit up for success. We have to be able to teach the mom how to be a good parent. We have to teach her to value education enough that she then, in turn, will inculcate that value for education into her own child. So my vision for Young Mothers Program is that the teen mom be able to stay in the same school that she was in when she was pregnant, that she be encouraged with parenting skills, and that after her child is born, a daycare on the same site would be available where she could, when she had a break from classes, could go down and spend time with her child, where there's professional oversight, someone who can coach that young mom into being a better, into working more productively with her child instead of getting all tense and screaming when the child is unhappy and crying, someone who can teach that young mom how to manage the situations better. I can envision a world where the teen mom walks across the stage and graduates on the same day and in the same place that their child is wearing a graduation gown, crossing the stage for kindergarten, and that that family unit has learned to appreciate what education can do for them in getting them out of poverty and into a life that's more worthwhile living.
Now, you've had that vision for some time.
Yes.
Tell me what's its status right now. Well, first of all, what's being done for moms? There is a program, but it's not on-site.
Right.
At those places.
Right. The biggest breakthrough I've been able to make in the last couple of years, essentially, is only to win back services that had existed once before. Once upon a time, a young mom could stay after the year that her baby was born. Once upon a time--
On-site.
They would be able to stay in the same school. There's, at one point, there was an on-site daycare, but we don't have that back yet The parent, the young mom, used to ride a yellow school bus, so direct door-to-door service. And at some point, when we were doing our transportation plan for the district, those moms were then, had to use the RTS buses. And that meant they would often have to take a bus with their child to the daycare, and then another bus transferring downtown, back to the school, and then repeat that process over again at the end of the day. Attendance was terrible, needless to say.
Yes.
And if they were there at all, it was often late because the bus connections, it was just too much to ask of them. So we've won back the door-to-door bus service, and we've won back an opportunity for these kids to stay in the Young Mothers Program even after their babies are born. We still need to get that daycare part. And one of the things I hope to accomplish, we learned a long time ago that Montessori has a program called the Infant and Toddler Program in place at MCC for MCC students. If we could replicate that model here in our school district, that's the part that I'm interested in seeing, a daycare and infant-toddler program that's Montessori-driven, that could feed right into our Montessori schools at pre-K, you know, three- and four-year-olds, and then on to kindergarten.
Okay. Well, we're at the end of our first segment. That goes so fast, doesn't it?
It does.
Okay. Welcome back, and we're going to talk about some other initiatives that may be around the corner, so don't go away. Welcome back to Spotlight on Schools. We're talking with Willa Powell, a member of the Rochester City School Board. We've been talking about some school initiatives that the Board of Education may tackle this time because it's going to be a little more activist. So let's go on to Van Winkle, now the president of the school Board. One of the parts of Van Winkle's revolution is the creation of what he calls "opportunity zones" in the city that would partner with suburban school districts. Now, it sounds to me like an expansion of the current urban-suburban program. It's one attempt to offset the effects of the concentration of poverty. What's your take on this proposal?
I think it's a very pragmatic approach. The fact is, our community has rejected the idea of county-wide schools or metro schools. So we have to look at, well, what options are left. Bill Calla has attempted to bring forth an idea of a particular kind of charter school, a regional charter school, that would allow us to balance the number of students that are within the suburbs, or within the city, against those in the suburbs, to balance those populations. But current charter school law doesn't allow you to discriminate against, in favor of or against, a particular student application, even for the purposes of balancing that population. So he's hit a brick wall on that. So we can't necessarily look to the charter school movement to be our savior on that. But to the extent that urban-suburban was helpful, useful, that spoke to our suburban neighbors, this is a way of, through volunteer activities on the parts of parents, to help to reintegrate our city schools and provide the same kinds of opportunities for our urban kids that our suburban neighbors have.
So far, in the urban-suburban program, there are about 500 kids out of a school district of 30,000 who take part, and they go to eight different school districts.
And it, for the most part, it's our kids going out--
Right.
--with much fewer of the suburban kids coming in.
Right. There was a poll, in fact, Bill Calla was here, and he talked about that poll that was done a couple of years ago, that talked about a willingness to participate in a suburban exchange, an exchange urban-suburban. And I was surprised that people in the suburbs, 47% would be willing to do that. Forty-seven percent is almost 50%. Of course, it was much higher in the city, be willing to do that. It was 70%. I was surprised it was that close. Okay, let's go on to one of his other ideas. Van Winkle's initiative was to replicate, you mentioned this earlier, actually, in last week's show, the district's School of the Arts. Now, replicate in what sense, and what's your take on that?
Okay. Well, there are a couple of things that we can do, and we have successful programs that we could either expand them and make room for more children to participate in the same program, or we can set up, essentially, a mirror image of it in another part of town and split the population.
Now, explain to us, what is it about the School of the Arts that makes it such an attractive thing?
Well, that's a good question, and the heart of that question is that not everything about it is replicable. You could replicate the building, but it's also in a safe neighborhood, right in our cultural district. Its size makes it smaller than most of our high schools, so that's part of what makes it successful. And it has a longstanding reputation. It takes years and years and years to build a reputation. It takes years and years to change a bad reputation. School of the Arts has everything going for it. We actually did try to, essentially, replicate School of the Arts when the Franklin Building was parceled up into smaller school units. One of those units was, had to do with artistic endeavor. Global Media is what it was called. But you can't put a new program with a new name in a failing school and expect people to automatically be willing to give it a try. We really could not overcome the reputation that the Franklin Building carried with it. So to create a new, to replicate a School of the Arts would require that you somehow be able to inculcate the reputation of School of the Arts along with all of the programs. Now, School of the Arts is a fairly expensive school to put up and run with its stages and specialty curriculum that's, essentially, voluntary, that are outside of the state requirements. So replicating a School of the Arts, reputation aside, would be a costly endeavor, and we tend to steer away from anything that costs more money. You know, we wouldn't get any help from the state for something like this. If it doesn't fall under the category of school improvement grants, which have a limited duration, we couldn't get any help at all. And then, as I said, because school improvement grants are only for, sort of, the startup years, how would we pay for the additional cost of additional teachers on an ongoing basis? You know, that's one of the biggest reasons that initiatives in the city die on the vine is because they're funded by grants, and when the money dries up, we don't have the resources to keep it going. This is another reason why, as a district, we need to press the state for fair and equitable funding. As long as we're relying on grants to get anything going, it's not sustainable. This is part of what Dr. Vargas talks about when he says that we have structural deficits, that we can't keep doing what we're doing because, in part, grant monies can't pay for ongoing operational costs. So we have to, as good as we are at getting grant money to fund our schools, we have to figure out how to reverse the process, how to get the funding into our operating aid from the state and less on this targeted aid. The problem, Jim, is that we have politicians in the state of New York who want to be able to declare victory over things. And grants, legislating grant funds or awarding grants is a great way of putting your name on something and saying, yes, my constituents, I have done this for you. Never mind, it'll disappear, evaporate in two years.
Yeah. Something about the School of the Arts, I have heard it mentioned as one of the ways to draw people from the suburbs in here. The problem that I also know is that there are many schools out there who have their own great drama programs--
That's right.
--and musical programs, and it might not draw.
Well, I think it might keep parent, middle-class parents in the city. Here's my concern with that. If all of the middle-class cities, families, and all of their middle-class values and wealth and intellectual capacity of their children are all in one school, we're, within the city, just as segregated as if we were, as if all those same families were to leave. It doesn't necessarily help the reputation of the city school district for one school and only one school to be successful. Same thing could be said about the International Baccalaureate Program.
Yep.
In order to create that success, you have to do a brain drain of all of the rest of the schools.
Okay. We are now at the end of our second segment. We have one left. We've got a lot to cram in.
Okay.
So, don't go away. We're going to talk about a whole lot of stuff. See you in a minute. Welcome back to Spotlight on Schools. We're talking with Willa Powell, a member of the Rochester City School Board. I want to give a quote that appeared in a recent Democrat and Chronicle editorial. It says this, "This page has been highly critical of the present Board refusing to endorse White, Elliott, and Jose Cruz in the last year's elections. Our decision was based primarily on the overall Board's inability to make substantial progress towards student performance, which is the worst in New York State, based on myriad measures." Ouch. How would you respond to that?
There's a place for criticism of the Board when it can't come up with its own agenda for reform. There's a legitimate place for that criticism. But to blame the Board for the performance of a school district, which is a very much predictable path, given the poverty of our community, lowest in the state, next, nearly the lowest in the country, in a country with child poverty higher than every, higher than every industrialized nation except Romania, we have to look at how the entire system is oppressing our children and depressing their achievement. We don't fund urban districts to the extent that the campaign for fiscal equity had determined we should be paying for urban education. There were studies at the conclusion of that case, when it was in front of our state Court of Appeals, that showed, there were at least four different studies, including the Successful Schools study, that showed just how much it takes to educate children in poverty versus children that are living above the poverty line, and the number is almost twice as much. And if we're not willing to spend twice as much, if we're going to make excuses, like, while you wouldn't know what to do with it if we gave it to you, or whatever other excuses--
Throw more money at it. That's all you want to do, right?
Well, that is what people say. And the fact is, you can't just throw money at it. You have to have a plan. But there's an awful lot of things you can't do without money. So if we're not prepared to spend money at the state level equitably and get money into urban districts where it can, quite frankly, 38% of the children of this state are educated in Rochester, Syracuse, Buffalo, Yonkers, and New York City. 38%. If the state of New York's measures for achievement are going to move, we have to do something with those 38% of the children that are living in urban districts. You can't move the dial if you only pay attention to wealthy Long Island districts or middle-class Monroe County districts. You can't move that dial much if you only put money in Allegheny County, where the density, where there's, like, nobody lives. You could help those kids in Allegheny County, but you're not going to move the dial that way. You have to have a good, sound public policy about education and funding it.
And where do they get the money? Raise taxes, right?
Well, we have a governor who doesn't want to raise taxes. Half of, or a third of all of the money that is called "education funding" is actually in STAR rebates. We don't give a lot of cash money to wealthy districts in Long Island, but we give an awful lot of STAR rebates. Now, STAR used to be a program that was designed to help elderly people and people on fixed incomes be able to stay in their homes when their poverty values went up. It's turned into a middle-class tax break, and the more money you have invested in your home, the more STAR money you get back. So the STAR money goes disproportionately to wealthy districts. So there are things that we can do in this state that can drive more money to education and to drive it towards urban education, but they are politically unpalatable. The governor is not going to sign legislation that takes STAR money away because it's the governor whose name is on every STAR check that you get.
And that every STAR check is a vote, perhaps?
It could very well be, and to think we don't have any corruption in New York State.
Oh, shh. Let's move to another one before we run out of time. I know you have some pretty strong opinions on the Common Core. One area that has impacted Rochester and other urban areas is the implementation of high-stakes testing brought on by the adoption of the Common Core by New York State. I know you have strong opinions on that.
Go for it. The implementation was way too fast. The tests are deeply flawed. We don't know a lot about a test because Pearson, the publishing company, has sworn the state to a certain amount of test secrecy. So all we know about the FOPOs of the test are what's been leaked out. But as a parent and someone whose own child was supposed to take the tests in the third grade last year, I felt that it was inappropriate for the state to use my child's time in the classroom to establish the benchmark for all future children. And I simply said, no, my son is not, his time isn't going to be used this way. So, you know, I talked with the principal of the school and said, find another worthwhile educational endeavor for this child. He's not taking this test. And if you can't do it, then he's not going to school that day. We'll go to the museum, or we'll go to the library, or we'll do something educationally useful. But, you know, I reserve the right to have a different opinion on the next set of tests, and maybe the next set of tests after that. So far, I haven't seen a willingness on the part of the state to be more respectful of the opinions of parents and their concerns.
Oh, John King was--
Anything but respectful.
--the Commissioner of Education was anything but respectful to the parents, and that was a fiasco--
Right.
--that part. Now, the implementation of Common Core, the goal of that is to raise the quality of people entering college. That's the goal.
Right.
We know that in Rochester, less than 50% of kids graduated, and that's every year, and a recent study a couple of years ago said that 19%, that's one of five, of those kids who graduated--
Would be college-ready.
--is college-ready.
Right.
That's sad. However, and you're not arguing against raising standards.
I'm not.
But this, the implementation was too quick. Teachers didn't have the materials.
Right. And the materials the state provided on the various professional websites, there were, essentially, teaching modules pushed out by the state to all the teachers. And the public message that Commissioner King delivered was, these are recommended materials. The teacher should, you know, that follow the core curriculum, teachers can use them or not use them as they see fit, but this is a model they can, and a resource they can turn to. What he said privately to those teachers was, if you're a failing school and you're not doing this, woe unto you. Okay, so the teachers perceived it as a coercive, as being coerced into using this, to the exclusion of their own teaching style and their own materials. What I found offensive about the materials that were provided was the brainwashing that came with it. Let me give you an example--
We've got about a minute.
Oh, well, the example of a reading module on Nazi Germany and a test and a homework assignment. Explain, argue the case why Nazi Germany was correct.
Oh, I heard about that.
Yeah.
That's not a urban myth?
No. And other, essentially, brainwashing efforts that-- Now, you understand the educational purpose of being able to teach someone to argue both sides of a topic. You know, that's basic debate skills and critical thinking. But best that you use a model or an example that is a little less, a little less--
Morally offensive.
More morally ambiguous than that. You know, there are a lot of topics that you could argue two sides of. I don't think that's one of them.
Okay. We are out of time. Despite all the things that trouble you, you're going to keep fighting the good fight. Am I right?
I am. And it's my hope that when, especially now with these changes in education curriculum, as well as the funding issues, that people will become engaged. And the more that the rank-and-file parents, teachers, community members argue and push back, the more likely that our institutions will recognize that there's a need, and when I say institutions, I'm talking about those that govern us, those that govern school districts, will start to recognize what's truly needed instead of what's politically expedient.
Wow. Willa Powell, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
All right. You've been watching Spotlight on Schools. See you next time. Good night.